Welcome to this evening's Huntington City Council meeting for February fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. Our invocation tonight is by Pastor Rory Chapman from Faith Health Appalachia, and our pledge will be led by Councilman Pat Jones at this time. Could you stand and silence yourself, Vince?
Do you bow your heads with me? Almighty God, we thank you for another day you've given us. I ask that in the proceedings of tonight's meeting, you would be glorified and pleased with our efforts in the city we love. Lord, I thank you for this council you've gathered together to serve our city. I ask that you would fill them with your wisdom, discernment, and love for both their neighborhoods and all that make up Huntington. I thank you also for our mayor, whom you've appointed to lead our city. I ask that you would give him guidance, protection, favor, and passion to lead Huntington well as he has done for these past ten years. Father, we thank you for the city we are proud to call home and for those who seek its welfare and find their welfare in it. And as we reflect upon our past and look forward to our future, we ask your continued blessings upon Huntington, West Virginia. In Christ's name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Ms. Miller, will you please call the roll?
Yes, ma'am. Mr. Anderson?
Present.
Mr. Bailey?
Present.
Mr. Bowen?
Here.
Mr. Jackson?
Here.
Ms. Johnson?
Here.
Mr. Jones?
Here.
Ms. Mount?
Here.
Ms. Rumball?
Here.
Mr. Shockley?
Here.
Mr. Sweeney?
Here.
Ms. Walling?
Present.
Thank you.
Item number three is a synopsis of the last meeting. Do I have a motion to adopt?
It's all moved.
For a second? Thank you. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The synopsis is approved. Item number four, for our reports of the mayor tonight, we'll have Mayor Williams give us our state of the city address. Thank you.
Happy Valentine's Day. Madam Chair and members of council, while this is the mayor's report, as the chair indicated, we're having today in its stead, or my report, is the state of the city. And in accordance with the provisions of Article Ten, Section ten point two and ten point three of the Charter of the City of Huntington, I hereby officially present to you the proposed budget and an accompanying budget message for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-three. We just completed a year-long celebration of our one hundred and fiftieth anniversary of our city's founding. Our celebration was such a gratifying example of the lifestyle and kind nature of our community, and I couldn't have been more proud to see how our residents chose to celebrate in spite of the continuing pandemic that has enveloped our world. We were able to experience the compassionate measure of our city and the limitless, the limitless artistic talent expressed by our residents. The city was founded on the ambitious vision of a growing nation at the forefront of the industrial revolution. Interestingly, one hundred and fifty years later, the institutions that grew out of that industrial revolution and those institutions that grew and matured over the past century and a half are enabling the community to evolve out of the industrial revolution that defined a city of manufacturing. A city moving from the industrial revolution into a city of the digital age that will define a region of research and development addressing the greatest challenges facing the world. Our city is defining its way as a constant jewel along the Ohio River, whose luster is beginning to be realized once again by the marketplace of the world. What a wonderful time for us who live in this city, in this valley. What a wonderful opportunity for those of us who live in this city and in this valley to demonstrate to a world in disarray how a community can thrive with a heart of compassion, a mind of intuitive innovation, and an innate fortitude of doggedly determined expectations. We're not labeled by our challenges. We are being acknowledged by the manner in which we create solutions. What a tremendous gift for those of us who live in this city, in this valley, to provide to a state and region where the standard expectation of hardship and hopelessness is replaced with the expectation and ambition born out of innovative creativity. During my nearly five decades of living in this city and the six and a half decades of living in this state, I have never known such opportunity for advancement and enrichment and enrichment that we have today. When I became mayor in two thousand and thirteen, I was surprised at the level of neglect that had occurred over the decades, not due to lack of leadership, but due to a lack of resources. As a result of the brilliant execution by our leadership team and the dedicated employees of all city departments, resources now are at a level where creation, repair, replacement, and upgrade of public facilities are being addressed for the first time ever, or at least over the last sixty-plus years. This is an ideal time to be serving in local government generally. But this time is of historical significance to be serving in local government in Huntington, West Virginia. Time and again, we have stated that we endeavor to set standards that the rest of the nation would seek to emulate, and the prescription for that outcome has been a mantra that lives in our hearts this very day. Make no little plans. They have no magic to stir men's blood. And I've heard time and again about our accomplishments. Who would have ever dreamed? My response has been consistent. We did. We dream boldly. We act decisively. We celebrate humbly. This is the Huntington way. But such acclamations are not advisable to serve as an excuse to sit back in self-congratulatory mode. That should be reserved to those who will write our obituaries. We have work that is still undone, and any expectation that we have earned the right to ease back on the throttle provides a disservice to all who have signed on for this adventure. A foundation has been laid for us to build a digital economy that will guide us through the next fifty years. Huntington, as Huntington is light years today, different from what we were like in the nineteen forty's, nineteen fifty's, nineteen sixty's, and nineteen seventy's. Imagine how different this city will be in the twenty thirty's, forty's, fifty's, and sixty's. What it will be then depends upon what we dream it to be now. Naturally, aspirations and expectations of what we will make for our future all depends on how we aspire and what we expect to do today. We are a city in transformation. We are a city being transformed for the future. Fortunately, we're finding that the fact that we are indeed fiscally stable is no longer a temporary status, but an institutional staple. Over the past four years, our fiscal position in the annual budget message was listed as in two thousand and nineteen. My message said, "We have an expense problem, not a revenue problem." Twenty twenty, the budget message was, "Revenues are consistent and stable. Expenses are under control." Twenty twenty-one, this council's first budget message. This is the first time in over fifty years that we are not operating from a perspective of scarcity. And in two thousand and twenty-two, we can report that the city of Huntington is a financially sound operation with resources available to provide basic services and aggressively address crumbling infrastructure that has either never been addressed or not been addressed in decades. The fiscal year two thousand and twenty-three budget that is presented should be familiar to each of you. Last year's budget served as a template for this year's budget. In recent years, we've taken care of our most precious asset, our employees, by assuring that their pensions are safe, that they are compensated fairly, and that they can work with an assurance that we are looking out for their safety during a pandemic and in dangerous conditions that come with their jobs. We've been aggressive in addressing infrastructure throughout the city for the first, throughout the city, and oftentimes for the first time ever. In turn, we've been active in renovating existing facilities that are owned by the city and building new facilities to replace the outdated ones. We've implemented a fleet maintenance program for all of our departments, and accompanying that endeavor assured that each department has new equipment and apparatus acquired each year to upgrade our capacity to address new challenges. And certainly, we have provided tax relief for our business community to protect our very special eclectic retail environment that has been created in Huntington, and we've also assured tax and fee relief to our residents to assist in easing the burden of the pandemic. The policies set forth and the programs established by this administration will continue on its steady path. As a result, there's no need to change our direction or tone. As I said, this budget will be familiar. We have governed intellectually, and its result is a steady, strong fiscal balance sheet. We now have the capacity to not just govern intellectually, but we now have the capacity to govern with our heart. I will outline that distinction later in my remarks. The military says it best. We must leave no person behind. When I became mayor in two thousand and thirteen, I aspired for the city to have a fortress, a fortress balance sheet. And we've reached that milestone. Four years running, the city has had finding-free audits. Zero findings in each audit. In the history of the city, this has never before been accomplished. Also, our reserves have increased to enable us to proactively address our capital needs. And as a result of our fortress balance sheet, pensions are being paid, pensions are assured, increases in pay for our employees have been provided the past six years, and capital infrastructure is scheduled for repair and replacement. Public Works will continue to receive increased funding for roads to be paved at a record pace. Unexpected hill slippages, landslides, road failures, all are being addressed now immediately. We will begin an implementation of a ten-year scheduled paving cycle that I introduced in concept last year to you, council members. And we expect to implement the paving cycle over a three-year period so that by two thousand and twenty-four, roads will be placed on a schedule for paving over a ten-year period and ongoing maintenance to lengthen the viability of the street service will be instituted along with that. While the sanitary sewers, stormwater sewers, and combination sewers are managed by the Water Quality Board, and while they're not part of our general fund and appropriations, I want to give a report of some of what the Water Quality Board has addressed. The Water Quality Board has, for the first time ever, established flood control measures for the Eighth Street and Tenth Street underpasses and completed extensive repairs on the Twentieth Street underpass. The interceptor line that was built in the nineteen fifty's to carry sewage from every neighborhood of the city, from Altizer and Guyan Dot through the city to the sewage treatment plant in Westmoreland, is now being cleaned out for the very first time, and over ten million pounds of debris has been removed from the line. Additional work is planned to build a stormwater system in the Hylon area in addressing major issues related to our flood wall, our ancient pump stations, and our sewer plant. As is well known, there is a record amount of federal funding available that has not been available at such a scale in eighty years. Unfortunately, the city of Huntington is not eligible to receive state or federal funding for sewer improvements because our rates are too low. In order to successfully enter the door to receive the first dime of federal support, we will have to increase our sewer rates. And we haven't determined what that schedule will look like, and you can expect a recommendation for a rate increase in some form or fashion later this year. A rate increase will be coming for council's approval. The only way we will be able to address the sanitary and stormwater issues is to take advantage of the federal grants that are available to every city, county, and state across the nation. And that means we will have to address our rates to become eligible for federal support. One major concern that needs to be resolved immediately is the flooding at Arlington Boulevard. If the problem only needed the city to act, we would be near resolving the problem. Unfortunately, the source of the problem begins outside the city limits, and we have no authority to resolve that, those issues. Other state and federal agencies are involved as well. The problem is complex, and the solution is just as complex. The creek causing all the flooding on Arlington Boulevard backs up as the Guyan Dot River rises. There's a giant culvert that is built under Route Sixty at the Sunoco Station. That culvert continues to become clogged, and as a result, the creek can't free, cannot flow freely into the Guyan Dot River. And even when the culvert becomes unclogged, if the Guyan Dot River reaches flood stage, the creek has nowhere to flow. The Stormwater Utility has received a permit to create plans to resolve the issue. Those plans have been approved, and we're working with federal and state authorities to see that those issues that require action outside the city will be addressed as we proceed with our efforts. Obviously, our efforts will be futile and to no avail if we are not able to assure that the issues outside the city are simultaneously being addressed. Fortunately, the leadership of the Water Quality Board and the Stormwater Utility have this listed as a top priority. The men and women in our Public Works Department have the most important jobs in the city and the most thankless jobs in the city. At night, when you're comfortable at home and when the snow and the ice are pouring down and the temperatures plunge, our Public Works employees are out in the cold into the night, in the elements, driving the trucks, removing the downed trees, picking up your garbage, repairing the collapsed street. The men and women of the Public Works Department are a pride, prideful group. They're always so grateful when a letter is written to the Public Works Director or to my office complimenting what the public is seeing them do. Any act of kindness, just as giving a cold bottled water on a hot summer day or a simple thumbs up as you drive by lifts their spirits immeasurably. Our police and fire departments will continue to protect our families and our homes in a world-class manner. The past years have been an ongoing challenge for each department. Whether it be the agony of the epidemic of addiction or the social challenges that question the veracity of the manner in which protection is provided, it is hard to be a firefighter or a police officer. As a result, we, like every municipality across the nation, are having difficulty recruiting qualified individuals to serve in the positions of public safety. It is the number one priority for the police chief and fire chief to see that our, our staffs are, that we are fully staffed at our budgeted levels. And once we accomplish that goal, we will, during our next budgets, systematically begin to increase our budgeted staffing to levels that provide us the flexibility in our staffing and service models to be able to provide the necessary service that the citizens deserve. Our departments in the Fire and Police Department are the largest budgets in the city's history, the largest budgets for each department in the city's history. It is interesting to note that each departmental budget for the Fire Department and the departmental budget for the Police Department, while they have been provided record budgetary levels, the staffing is significantly lower than any historical level. We must increase our staffing, but in the meantime, we are making certain that we equip our police officers and firefighters to assure that they can effectively and safely perform their duties. We're proceeding with the planned construction of two fire stations, and it must be noted that there are no plans and have been no plans made to consolidate fire stations. Our city needs the safety provided by our six stations. We have taken significant measures to renovate five of the six stations over the past four years. Two of those desperately, desperately need to be replaced, hence the construction of the two new stations. Council has approved numerous projects that will be funded with the American Rescue Plan Act appropriation given directly to the city. And this funding is separate from the general fund budget, and it will not be included in this message or be addressed during our budget discussions. It is important, though, to realize that the rescue plan funding is manna from heaven. My greatest concern, as we were making plans as to how we would transform the economy of our city and our region, was where were we going to obtain the resources to turn these gigantic plans into a reality? The miracle of the rescue plan funding provides our city an opportunity to change the face of our region for the next fifty years, fifty-plus years. One such project will provide an immediate godsend to the senior citizens living in the west end of Huntington. The creation of the West End Senior Wellness Center in partnership with the Cabo County Community Services Organization will provide healthcare assistance and public support for the seniors of the west end of Huntington. It is fitting that there is a resolution on today's agenda to name the Senior Wellness Center, the Bob Bailey Senior Wellness Center. Councilman Bailey, he will always be known, be called by me Coach Bailey in the most respectful manner possible. Coach Bailey has built a career that spans from the nineteen seventies to today, before some of you even being born. The hallmark of his service was never, ever in doubt, beginning with his blessed mother and father. Coach Bailey has always made certain that the seniors of Cabo County and Huntington, including Westmoreland, were always given top priority. It is time this faithful public servant be acknowledged and thanked for his leadership, his passion, and his love of our city. We love you, Coach. We love you, Coach. As members of council, as members of council know, there is no lack of calls that you receive regarding any number of concerns in the city. Just in the mayor's office last year, we received seventy-two thousand and twenty phone calls regarding all areas of concern. We in turn, in twenty twenty-one, received one thousand seven hundred and fourteen emails and calls from council members regarding various issues that constituents bring to your attention. A team of employees from the leadership team, led by Brian Chambers, Scott Limley and Mark Bates, have worked over the past year to create a Huntington WV three-one-one system where residents and council members can enter on a Huntington WV three-one-one phone app any number of concerns that need to be addressed or just requesting an an, an answer to a question. The system will provide an update, up-to-date response to the issue and provide council members a means through which they can com- track complaints or simple requests. The Huntington WV three-one-one system will be unveiled to the public tomorrow. Addressing our foundational issues of stable fiscal management, upgrading of our infrastructure and assuring the safety of our homes and neighborhoods, all are of paramount importance. These are the basics on what we have focused, on which we have focused our efforts. All these, all these give us an opportunity to transform our city from an aging, charming city with good bones, but whose best days are in the rearview mirror, to a city with a charming flair that connects the rich history of the past with the exciting eclectic flair of a university community full of diversity and exciting, dynamic energy. We will continue our efforts to rid ourselves of unsafe dilapidated structures and we have demolished over four hundred structures in the past nine years. And we've torn down over two hundred the past two years. We will demolish another one hundred structures again this year. As I indicated last year, a prosperous city does not grow by tearing things down. Growth occurs by building. We are continuing our Project Shine program that we initiated last year. Nearly one hundred structures were renovated in the Hyland, in the Fairfield and in the West End neighborhoods. And we're going to continue that program again this year. But in turn, we're also expanding our efforts for additional rehab programs to expand into the entire city. Our efforts to assure that all rental residential housing is safe and meets building code standards is lifting the value of our housing stock. The housing study that was completed in twenty twenty advised us that we have way too much rental property. Forty-nine percent, forty-nine percent of our residential property is rental. And that's way too high for a prosperous community. Of that forty-nine percent, which is rental, fifty-seven percent is deemed to be in some significant level of disrepair. Our efforts are to assure that our rental property is fit for our residents and our new code enforcement officers are helping us address this inequity. Property owned by the Land Reuse Agency that were attained by property tax sales create a golden opportunity to take forgotten, neglected properties to be sold at a very inexpensive cost in exchange for someone who will commit to renovate or demolish the home and rebuild it and live there for at least ten years. Programs of this nature can and will enhance the curb appeal of neighborhoods and established community once again. It's amazing some of the information that is beginning to seep out to the country and the world about the magic of Huntington. A recent study by researchers from Stanford University report that Huntington is one of the top five cities, one of the top five cities in the nation with the highest standard of living for college graduates. Huntington's unemployment rate in December was at an astounding low, two-point-six percent. Our median income is thirty-one thousand, two-hundred-and-sixty-two dollars. Five thousand dollars more than the median income of the average West Virginian. Our efforts emanating from our America's Best Communities competition created the Huntington Innovation Plan detailing how to re- how to build and rebuild our infrastructure, our redevelopment efforts in Hyland, Fairfield and the West End, efforts to build a citywide broadband that attracts businesses and enhances neighborhoods and the continued development of downtown. All these projects are all highly transformational that breed excitement and investment, employment and prosperity. Yet a portion of our community struggles to make ends meet. Thirty-two-point-three percent of our residents live in poverty. Thirty-two-point-three percent living in poverty is unacceptable in a community that has a world-class research university and a world-class medical center. We cannot consider ourselves to be a prosperous country and community when one-third of our neighbors live in poverty. When twenty-eight percent of our neighbors live in substandard housing. When children and the elderly go hungry. When young people have not been given an opportunity and have not been empowered to see the value and of a future in service, a future of service. We cannot congratulate ourselves that we are becoming a city of solutions. We have been proclaimed America's Best Community. While one-third of our residents live in poverty and are going hungry and missing meals. The honest and sad truth is that with all that we are doing to proudly pull ourselves up by our bootstraps, there are those, there are those who don't even have boots to pull upon. It underscores how important all of our develop- development plans are. Therefore, we are pursuing our ongoing demolition efforts, code enforcement efforts, housing rehabilitation programs to make neighborhoods shine. In tandem, we are aggressively pursuing our economic development efforts in Hyland, Fairfield, West End and downtown and our broadband expansion all over the city. All to create economic opportunity and opportunity for prosperity to the entire populace. We will unveil efforts this spring and summer to fight hunger and to address food insecurity. We've been partnering with the Facing Hunger Food Bank through the volunteer efforts of many council members and our city employees. We will be assisting the Facing Hunger Food Bank with our budget as well this year with a two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar appropriation. We are establishing a summer emp- employment empowerment program for at-risk youths that will provide city jobs to help clean up neighborhoods, clear overgrown lots and also provide enrichment programs to provide insight as to how to present yourself in a workplace and interact with others in a professional, skillful manner. The Youth Empowerment Program will begin at the beginning of June and run through the beginning of August when school starts. Last year, we created a position in the mayor's office that Jan Rader has just agreed to fill. The position is the Director of Public Health and Drug Control Policy. I will be appointing a mayor's advisory council to provide guidance and counsel as to how we can best address our health and addiction challenges. I expect the council to advise me on these issues and the membership will be made up of a cross-section of public health and drug policy leaders in Huntington and from throughout the state. All of these people are individuals with whom I have consulted and worked with the past nine years to address our addiction issues and public health challenges. Prosperous city does not simply measure its wealth in financial terms. It also measures itself by its heart. Certainly, economic means will often dictate the ease in which someone is able to meander through life. Yet if we find ourselves as a community seeking to advance ourselves without taking into account the life of those by our side, we will find ourselves overcome with poverty of spirit. The, the greatest compliment that has been placed upon the city of Huntington by others since I've been in office was not when we were named America's Best Community. And I gotta admit, that was pretty cool. Or named City of Solutions. Or City of Service. The greatest compliment that was placed upon our cities and our residents was when an African governor proclaimed Huntington, West Virginia, a city of compassion. We will find riches in our future. We will develop prosperity for our family and our neighbors and we will create wealth and opportunity when we are able to say that our fortune came from the gratitude of a thankful neighbor. May God during this coming year bless our efforts with wisdom, humility and compassion. And may God bless our beloved city, state and nation.
Thank you, Mayor Williams. It's kinda hard to follow that, to be honest. We'll try, right? All right, item number five is a resolution. Ms. Miller.
Resolution twenty-twenty-two R zero-three. A resolution of council confirming the appointment, appointment of Mark Hooveris to the Huntington Municipal Development Authority.
Move to adopt.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilwoman Johnson and a second by Councilwoman Rawling, Walling, sorry. Um, any ca- questions of council? All right, Councilman Jackson, do you have a personnel committee report for us?
Yes, we did meet and moved to full council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Anyone from the public on this item? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution passes. Item number six, one small correction. It should be T Kirk Daudrell on the agenda as opposed to R. Just beware of that. Resolution number twenty-twenty-two dash R dash oh-four. Ms. Miller.
A resolution of council confirming the appointment of T Kirk Daudrell to the Huntington Municipal Parking Board.
Move for the adoption.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Bowen and a second by Councilwoman Walling. Any questions from council? Councilman Jackson, Personnel Committee report?
Yes, we also met on this appointee and moved to full, full, full council, excuse me, with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. You guys had a busy night tonight, didn't you? Anyone from the public on this item? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution passes. Item number seven, resolution number twenty-twenty-two dash R dash ten. Ms. Miller.
A resolution of council naming the West End Senior Wellness Center the Pope Bob Bailey Senior Wellness Center.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Who was that on? Was that Mr. Anderson? We had Councilman Jackson for the adoption, move to adoption, move to adopt and Councilman Anderson for a second. Mr. Denison? Played a switcheroo on me there. City Manager Dial, welcome.
Yes, thank you. It is an honor for a kid who grew up in the West End of Huntington and has spent my life looking up to Bob Bailey, serving um this city, the state and the region. You know, the mayor, the mayor says that he'll be forever coached to him and we've all met Councilman Bailey in so many ways. He'll be forever sheriff to me, um, because I grew up and he, he was the sheriff. And so that's why we come to you today requesting that we name this wellness center in honor of Councilman Bob Bailey.
Thank you. Any questions from council? Uh, Mr. Bowen, would you like to give us committee report?
Administration Finance Committee met on this item, moved to full council with favorable recommendation.
All right, anyone from the public on this item? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution passes. Mr. Bailey, Councilman Bailey, would you like to say a couple words?
Not right now.
Okay, I wanted to offer. All right, congratulations. Item number eight, resolution twenty-twenty-two dash R dash eleven. Ms. Miller.
A resolution of council confirming the mayor's appointment of Greg Fuller to the position of Fire Chief for the city of Huntington.
Move for the adoption. Second.
We have a motion from Councilman Bowen, a second from Councilman Sweeney. Any questions from council? Is anyone from administration speaking on this one? Mr. Mayor?
My original intentions when we were discussing the opening of the Fire Chief's position was to have a national search and also to have a search committee be able to assist me and one of the first individuals who I knew I needed to And one of the first individuals who I knew I needed to talk to to get some advice as to how to recruit a top drawer Fire Chief and some of the things that I needed to talk to was Greg Fuller, former chief Greg Fuller. And earlier this summer, when we were dealing with the monsoon that came in in August, I reached out to Secretary Sandy and Homeland Security and asked them to come in to, to meet with us. And Chief Fuller was sitting right by our side. You see, he had a bit of a vested interest in making sure that things get straightened out or protected because his home is right down in Westmoreland. And if Hurricane Ida came in and hit us the next day after that one monsoon, the entire system would have been blown out and Westmoreland would have been the first part of the city to flood. That's just anecdotal where his heart is in serving our city, but also that he is so highly respected that he was second in charge in Homeland Security for the state of West Virginia. And as best I recall, covered nearly all of southern West Virginia. During that conversation that we had about getting some advice to move forward, if any of you ever have ever been in this situation before and if you haven't yet, let me give you a little idea. When there's a thought that goes through your mind and you're sitting there across from somebody that you know is just the right person for the job, don't hesitate and go, well, I've promised I'm going to go through a process. Sometimes you can get so caught up in the particulars of process that you lose the direction of where you're wanting to go, all the processes. And then all of a sudden, you miss your turn on the road. So I reached out, looked up at him, and I said, would you be interested in the chief's job? His eyes got big because I thought that if he wasn't interested, he would shut me down immediately. And he paused. And all I had to do was set the hook. We continued our conversation, and it was amazing. Let's understand something. He and I have not always been in agreement. He has said that there were some things that I was doing that in the past that he didn't agree to. But the one thing that I found to, that was wonderful about him is there are some people who know how to disagree in a gentlemanly-like fashion. But he saw the direction that we were going. And in the conversation that we had, he saw everything that I was listing in this speech today of not wanting to close stations, not wanting to consolidate stations, making sure that we have the proper equipment, making sure that we're hiring enough to, to staff with what we have budgeted, and assuring that we're going to hire additional people. We were on the same side of everything. And plus what we had done in the meantime with in guaranteeing the pensions and assuring the fire and police pensions. I didn't need to go any further. He needed to talk to his family, have some other personal considerations. And later that afternoon, he said, I'm in. This is a home run for us. A home run because I didn't know where we were going to go. Sometimes I'd rather be lucky than good. Councilwoman Johnson, that's what you call living by prayer.
Right.
So it's my honor to provide for you, for your confirmation, the next Fire Chief for the second time for the city of Huntington, Chief Greg Fuller.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilman Jackson, a committee report?
Yes, we did meet. And also, I heard from some firefighters that represent, represented us from the union. And you hear those guys when they say they run to what we run from when they tell you to, they want somebody or they a hundred percent back them. And I figure that's not really on us to go in any other direction. So we did move to full council with a favorable recommendation.
Wonderful, thank you. Anyone from the public on this item? All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution passes. Congratulations. All right. Item number nine on the agenda is Good and Welfare. We have one person from the public, Mr. David Clark.
Madam Chairman, in the spirit of the evening, I'll defer my remarks until a subsequent spring meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. All right, anyone else in the public? All right, we'll go around to our council members. We'll start over here with Mr. Jackson.
I have to revisit a comment about the competition at the full bank. I left out a couple of our teammates. You might think no one watches this, but they do. So that was myself, Chief Rader, Curtis Jones, Rebecca Jackson, and Vanessa. I can't remember Vanessa's last name. I apologize for that.
Hankins.
Hate names often when you can't remember them all. But I needed to let it be known, the full team, so.
So now we know who to get on our team.
We did get the most boxes, I, I think.
We were the Jackson Five.
All right, thank you.
We'll get you next year.
Now everyone knows who to steal for your team. All right, Mr. Bailey?
Yes, ma'am, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. As President of the Board Directors at CISO, which is Cabo County Community Service Organization, at our meeting last Wednesday, we voted unanimously to take in Ms. Teresa Johnson as one of our new members. And we're very proud to do that.
Congratulations.
At this time, I would like to thank city council for your support for the West End Senior Citizens Center. It's something that's been needed for many years. We finally found a, a man who had enough guts to say, let's build it and furnish us some money, which is our fine mayor. Yeah, he's worked harder than I have on this thing. He wouldn't, he wouldn't take any credit for it, but he has. So I'd like to thank all the council members, thank our fine mayor, and thank the citizens of West End and, and Westmoreland because good things are going to happen to them. And good things is going to happen to the city of Huntington. And that's one of the greatest speeches tonight that I've ever heard Mayor make. And I'll thank you, Mayor, for everything.
Thank you. Councilman Shockley? Councilman Anderson? Councilwoman Walling?
Yes, I'd like to congratulate Chief Rader on her new position. I remember coming to your swearing-in as what I believe was the first female professional fire chief in the state of West Virginia. I was inspired by you then. I continue to be inspired by you. And I think a, a trailblazer such as yourself is exactly the, the type of innovator that we need in this new position. So thank you and congratulations, and I look forward to seeing what you do.
Thank you. Ms. Johnson? Mr. Bowen?
Just want to quick thank you for everyone. Over the weekend, we had Westmoreland's first Sweetheart Dance as an all-inclusive opportunity for members of the communities and, and other parts of Huntington to come out, young and old, and bring the whole families out to just celebrate a time of dance together. We had that at the West Edge facility. So we want to thank Coalfield Development for the opportunity to use their venue there. The Wayne County Youth Prevention Coalition and the Wayne County Students Against Destructive Decisions were instrumental in that. We had about fifty people show up for the evening. Fun was had by everyone. We're hoping that we'll get an opportunity to have some more events like that throughout the warmer weather as it comes around. And we invite all of you to join us on our next run.
Thank you. Councilwoman Rumbaugh?
Sure. I had the pleasure of last week visiting Green Acres in La Sage, which is just outside of our city limits, out Route Two. And if you're not familiar, it is a, a program that provides employment for those with disabilities, like veterans or even those with other disabilities. And it also provides a, like a bottled water service. They have really good water. So I got to tour it because they have a new financial director and a new acting chair. And also to find out, they have a lot of resources that have not been utilized to their max. And they're also looking for additional workers to employ. They have thirty-five staff currently, but they could go up to fifty or more. So we want to get that message out that there, there's job opportunities at Green Acres for those with disabilities. And also, the, I think they're, they have a levy that's coming up or, or has been up. So they provide a valuable service to our community. They have a lot of resources, and I think they're looking for community partnerships. So please, if, if this speaks to you, reach out to those at Green Acres in La Sage because they're looking to expand their services to our community. That's it.
Thank you. Councilman Jones?
I would like to mention the fact that this is Black History Month. Huntington has some famous names connected with black history and like Garnett, Barnett, Garrettson, Woodson, Greer. And a friend of mine, a good friend of mine, David Harris, he is a, a director on one of the boards for one of the foundations that is involved in preserving black history. And one of their projects is Bethel Cemetery, which is located just off of Norway Avenue, close to the, its intersection with Norwood Road and the Robey Road. I, I was fortunate enough to go up there with him last spring and tour it. They are now in, in the process of partnering with the Cabo County Sheriff and also Marshall University's Archaeology Department in order to refurbish this piece of history for the black community here in Huntington and in Cabo County. I will be making a small donation, like I did last time, out of the funds that I'm provided by the city. And I would encourage any of the other council members that have extra funds and would like to do that, perhaps to do so, and any of the public that would like to make a contribution because this needs to be done, folks. It really does. So thank you for taking the time to, giving me the time to speak.
Thank you. Councilman Sweeney?
The only thing I have tonight is, as part of tradition, Councilman Shockley, we have something for you. I wasn't aware of this until right before the meeting, but it's tradition to pass on a gavel to the former chairman. And I want to say thank you for everything you taught me. You're my buddy.
All right, I think that wraps it up. At this moment, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. So moved. Meeting's adjourned.